That that part was intentional to to have this way this way.
I think the building also has deeper berms and a deeper setback. Yeah, like I think that this building lot was intended as a building lot to preserve views from when it was built in Lord knows eighties nineties whatever.
Mm-hmm. So the form the form based code uh has a recommendation for the landscape offer at the north which is a hundred feet. It has a recommendation for the south which was two hundred feet. Like I said, we're asking for uh a deviation of that to one fifty but one fifty bring just to get some flexibility one fifty brings us down here. So it's really about the parking lot. It's like we're off by like ten feet on the parking lot.
Okay, thanks.
Um.
Can you imagine why why go to four stories when the other was three? Why not keep everything at three stories? Is that's a significant, right? I mean.
Yep.
Why?
Um i- it it's really it was really driven through towards just the number of units that we were trying to target and to try to maximize the space.
Also to give you an idea, those two building, the apartment buildings that are parallel to hot metal, we had that mirrored across.
That's a good point.
We removed those naturally when the, you know, keep some sort of um unit count. So we tried to kind of distribute it as an additional story on either the buildings.
Yeah, that's a that's a fair point. So if um when we presented this um maybe July or August informally to the zoning commission, um so if if any of you saw that, um there were these same as these two buildings were actually located here.
Hmm.
So when those two buildings were taken away um to keep like holding set to keep the unit count, the four stories are what helped you that. So that's that was.
And the com- and the commission, the zoning commission at the time m- made their recommendation informally to p- to preserve view share. That was the reason.
Evidence. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. I I.
Yeah, well.
But they did that when they thought the other buildings were three stories, correct?
I should've.
So they they did ask for that and then what happened is they went up. So they made that recommendation.
And the four stories was on the table at the time.
It wasn't on your.
It wasn't.
It was subject to the view.
So that's You're correct. that's a big difference. So they asked for that to move without thinking then that the a ma- a proposal was probably gonna come back for some of those buildings to be four stories. So when they asked for that, it was thinking that all the buildings were gonna be three stories is. So I mean, to me, that's a big, that that's, you know, that's a big change.
It wa- it was subject to basically at the at the informal day, we didn't have the Sims, so they we didn't know what we were looking at.
Yeah.
Um those so it was basically, we're gonna provide the sense to see what the impacts of that that is. Um, sorry.
So the two, the two on the bottom right would have been on the bottom left, which is what our SIM had for where we could see the tower?
No, you're no, the the this was when we came in formally in like July or something.
Yeah, no, I'm saying that's that's where the view is. That's the view in question.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand your question. I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
So we have the bottom two on the right.
Yes, sir.
And the bottom two on the left. We there were two there on the left.
Yes, correct.
And the zoning commission wanted you to not have them there so that you could maintain the view from what I'm assuming is that entrance in the corner.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
So that's where our simulator was. That's the angle that we're looking, right?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
So we got rid of those two and now it's a little bit higher. Okay, I see.
Yes, so you're right. So if you and actually I I did this later as a separate exercise, but you you would have basically had a rectangle right here. If that building was not removed, you would have had this block right there. So.
And Aaron's point though is before the rendering, they were three feet. So you might have seen a little bit more than just the ridge line by the tower.
Yeah, yeah. And that was higher.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right, and I guess.
That story. They were, this was only an assumption. It was three?
Yeah.
At the time, at the time.
During the informal conversation, they were three.
Yes, okay. That's correct, okay. Um. I think I am done. Actually, I actually did have, well, considering I I didn't think I was gonna speak at all tonight, I think I'm definitely done.
I think I think.
Yeah, I told you.
Apology.
It's not you, right? No, it was it wasn't you that told me I wasn't you. So.
It didn't it didn't contradict anything you said at the zoning commission.
I I it's the same scripts. I really hope I wouldn't. There was only a couple of point. I was I was ge- I'm gonna defer to Mister Regretter, but there were a couple of things that we were gonna um talk about consistency with the P O C D. I think we've gone through them, at least a couple. There was only there was only maybe um two more that I've been asked to like just point out. Um, one is that we are um having an affordability affordable commitment of ten percent. Uh, that's that's kind of the details are being worked out with the zoning commission, but um we are um making that commitment. Um, and um obviously there there's gonna there's gonna be uh on sustainability obviously is key for everybody. Um, we're gonna we're gonna have that first of all by reducing um that parking lot to green space. We're actually actually adding seven acres of green space back to the property, if you believe that's not something I get to say very often. Um, and we're also gonna remove invasive species. Um, you know, the we haven't gotten to those details yet with the town engineer. Obviously, you guys have very um you guys have been at the forefront of stormwater regulations for several years. And we're we're gonna be obviously asked to comply with that, which is leads to without getting into details into sustainable practice and design too.
So at Hartford South. That was our time.
Yes.
Is it strictly residential?
That is one hundred percent residential what you're looking at right now, yes.
Right now. Are there plans to?
Well, don't read into that. It's don't read into that. It's it's one hundred percent residential, yes.
I don't. Okay, no plans to make it mixed use, commercial?
That's something that's being discussed at the zoning commission level.
Just now.
Um, we're waiting to to hear more from the commission next week about that. We've heard some we've heard minor conversation from the commission and from the public, but right now um our plan came in as one hundred percent residential.
Alright, let let me paint, let let me uh let me stop you, cause I think it's gonna you're gonna have lots of questions and you're gonna have, I think your questions are gonna be better served for the conversation if you let me just walk you through the P O C D framework. Is that okay?
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should've just started there, George.
I'm sorry.
But he doesn't.
He asked me to go first, so.
I did.
Now we're coming first.
But that was that was helpful.
Oh, sorry. Maybe we can talk a little bit about the the Hartford Form Based Code. Let's begin.
Okay, so so.
Okay.
There's different types, right? Type one reuse the property as it was, right?
That that is one of the options in the form base code. So I've got a I've got a slide that we'll talk about.
Okay.
Okay, so we we kind of went through this already. So it's a referral from the zoning commission asking for a review of conformance and a relationship to the adopted P O C D. So I use I use in 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 the planning world a a phrase um balance, which is when you're looking at P O C D conformity, you've got dozens and dozens and dozens of 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 policies that that can relate to any project, right? I think your job is to kind of do this on the big picture stuff and say, on balance, the a project conforms to the plan or it doesn't conform to the plan, or it could conform better if we did these kinds of things. I don't think there's any sense in saying finding this one little policy and saying that doesn't conform. Well, I think your job is to find an on balance framework. Um, and I think that's where you ask those questions. Is it on balance consistent with the goals and policies of the plan? And if it is or if it isn't, are there recommended changes that you could advise or make? Revisions or modifications to the to the pro- to eh to the project which improve the project and enhance its consistency to the P O C D? So that's that I think that's a good framework. So um ju- just to redo the math, five hundred and eighty, a hundred percent residential, all re- all all rental. Let's be be clear about that too. So no fee simple, no subdivision associated with it. All kind of, you know, owner owner owned, all leases. It's on a hundred and twenty-four acres. The there's your mix of unit types again, kind of heavy on that 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 the 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 four story and the three story multifamily. Uh, it's kind of a small number duplexes and and then um an interesting product which we we haven't really seen before that is that is becoming more popular in in the northeast nationwide is is this concept of of, you know, s- small single family rentals. So it's a it's it's a product we're seeing um that that we probably haven't seen as as much before.
Do you want me to let you finish?
Yeah, why don't we?
Please, whatever. I just want. On your your pleasure.
I mean, my recommend, I mean, hundred percent rental, five hundred and eighty rental units. No chance for an owner to buy an ill equity in his own home. Um, as far as the the P O C D, you know, we're uh one of our missions is to seek ways to help meet the diverse housing needs of present and future residents. Does that pass the diversity of housing test?
Sure, I think that's for you guys to decide. I think that's we do, we certainly we certainly have policy that that talks about we should provide diversity of housing, all types of economics, of all types of uh uh of all types of architecturally. So in on a project like this, uh uh that this is a comment we heard from 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 the citizens um at both public hearings. Is there no, is is there no, is there an opportunity for some homeownership here?
Okay.
I'm not gonna wear you out with this stuff. Um, so let's talk about the Form Based Code. So Hartford Sims Bay Form Base Code was adopted by the zoning commission and and community in two thousand and fourteen. And they do think it's important to note that the application to to create the Hartford Sims Bay Form Based Code, uh the town was the w- was an applicant and was a partner with the Hartford Insurance Company. Essentially to help provide a market entitlement for the property and to, you know, attract future owner, future developer in order to sustainably redevelop the site in some fashion. So the Silverman Group purchased the property in twenty fifteen. Not long after that, the 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 primary office building was was demolished. So primary office building, which which actually has a has a has a component zone dedicated to it in uh in the code, doesn't exist. It's actually called the special district. And so as soon as that happened, the 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 reuse of the building was gone. So that that was never, that 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 was really not an option. Um, so the the north side is um real essentially a hundred percent developed relative to the residential units and the Silverman Group began development on the north side in nineteen, in twenty nineteen, uh I think twenty nineteen, if I remember the documents. Um, so all the residential is done. There's still those two vacant uh vacant commercial structures upfront. Um, and and they they total about twenty-two thousand square feet in size. One's a six thousand square foot commercial building. The other is an eight thousand square foot floor pl- floor plate that has a second floor.
And are they responsible for trying to get that occupied?
So I'm will will let them address that, yeah. And and they are. This is this is the short answer. Um. Uh, you know what? I um I may have hidden. No, it comes up later. I do have a slide that talks about the the Form Based Code and and what we what we were thinking and what we wanted to do. Alright, so I think it's again important. This Hartford Sims Bay Form Based Code only applies to this ground. These to the north of the site. It it is it is it is a zoning regulation designed just for this. We don't apply it anywhere else in town. Uh, in this application process, it's really a two-step process. The first is what we call the mast- master site development process. So it is it's um it's intended to establish the development on the site. Uh 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 essentially where the where are the buildings located? What are the comp- well, when I say component zones, I mean what's the land use mix? Is is it residential? Is there uh non-residential? Is it commercial? Is it retail? That kind of thing. Um, building locations, architecture, street locations. So it is not um it is not a civilly engineered site. That comes, that is a second step as they get through the first step. Then the site plan comes back to the zoning commission for final approval on all those little detail, location of the stormwater and and final landscaping plans and all those kinds of things. Uh, this application, and we'll get too much in the weeds on this to- tonight with you, but it is um Harpson's very Form Based Code offers four different applica- application types from kind of simple site plan all the way through what we call a type four application. And that's what this is. That means um that the applicant under the code can ask for what we call alternative compliance. So they can ask for modifications to the standards of the Form Based Code. Uh, and they in in this case, they are there. There's a mixture of kind of a change to the land use mix. And 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 that's what we hit on a lot tonight, which is it being a hun- it the proposal being a hundred percent residential differs from the anticipated land use mix, which anticipated uh some level of 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 a mix of uses. But because in the type four application applicant can come can come in and ask for, we want just wanna make it a hundred percent. As well as other development standards, kind of minutia development standards. In this case, they're proposing four stories and four stories are permitted in the Form Based Code, notwithstanding that scenic vistas discussion. It's permitted, but it's only permitted at fifty feet, not fifty-five feet. Uh, there's a requirement for multi-use trail. The applicant's proposing in a in a in an environmental section to go from twelve feet to eight feet. So that's what I mean when they're proposing kind of alternative compliance with with strict standards. Um, alright, so I'm gonna hit you with with really what I think are kind of the four main areas of 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 P O C D framework. Land use, housing, conservation, economic development. Not gonna get into transportation or any, so let's hit the big ones. Um, and that's that's really the the job is to weigh these kinds of big categories. And I didn't, I want what I wanted to do is just, I wanted to cut these sections out of the plan. So it wasn't my language. Um, you know, with influence or advocacy. This is what your plan says, plan that we just finished and is effective January first and applies to this property. Um, and again, remember, we didn't change it that much. We carried, we we enhanced it and carried forward a lot of these. So in Sims Bay, we want the 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 overall land use strategies, we wanna guide future growth in the development in ways that promotes development with a sense of place or a sense of meaning or a sense of identity. Um, and strengthen Sims Bay Center and other village areas. We wanna guide development that reflects and respects our historical development patterns. Um, and again, we we use this word sense of place. Are we building places we wanna be a part of? And that's that's what I think sense of place means. And that's really the umbrella. Um, and then and and then the P O C D also walks us through certain areas of town. So we've got little uh different different areas. We talk about Hoskins or the North Village or Weetog or Sims Bay Center. And we we talk about the 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 hot metal corridor. And we break the hot metal corridor into into different areas. And so in hot metal corridor, I think that the the policy I really wanna direct your attention to, it's a very broad policy. It says, we wanna promote the appropriate use of the former Hartford Hartford Insurance Site using the Form Based Code or other approach. Now, the the other approach could mean by right underlying zoning, that it is the underlying zoning is industrial here. So the applicant could um, you know, belay the entire Hartford Sims Bay Code process and come in with a site plan for an industrial project on the entire hundred and twenty-four acres. So I think that's what that probably meant. But promote appropriate use of the former Hartford Insurance Site. And ultimately, it it it's the zoning commission's job, because the the application is in front of them, to to decide exactly what appropriate use is. Now, that is also what you're being asked to do, is is what they're proposing, an appropriate use of the site under the P O C D. Um, I I I I grabbed two screenshots here because the now we're going back and it it's, this is one of those interesting situations where you have to, where where the implementation code is 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 really a true sister to the P O C D. Because we get great guidance out of the out of what the Hartford Sims Bay Form Based Code says. Um, and in this case, we have specific land use components to the to the to the south site that gave lots of, that gave a whole bunch of different options. The the language says the Hartford South District, what it's called, um shall consist of any of the these following component zones. But there are nuance and limitation on each of those zones. So it says you can do neighborhood commercial on the south side, but that neighborhood commercial can only be, has to be limited to fifty percent of the site. So it means it's asking for a commercial component and a residential component under uh uh under that category. Um, the mixed use tran- transition kind of does the same thing. It talks about a mix of of industrial and office and urban residential. Um, as I said, special district doesn't exist anymore because it says it shall be the area with the existing office. Well, it's not there anymore. Neighborhood neighborhood transition uh assumes a transition from commercial to residential. And then to uh to commercial, to higher density residential, and then on to neighborhood. So and the 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 applicant and the owner has has the ability to pick from these. And I think that's the most uh most important thing to point out. And in this case, the applicant is proposing an alternative that says we're really not gonna do any of these. We wanna do instead a hundred percent mixed use residential. We wanna do single family, we wanna do some duplexes, and we wanna do apartments. Uh, let's talk about housing. We've spent a lot of time on our housing discussion over the last over the last year. The overall strategy for houses will, this community wants to provide a range of housing choices for people of all ages and economic circumstances. We wanna also increase the number of affordable units in Sims Bay. And if you remember, the the icons that we chose to use in the P O C D relates to diversity and affordable housing, inclusion, opportunity, and 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 the like. In 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 an effort to, eh nine point two is really important. It says, we seek wanna seek ways to help meet the diverse housing needs of present and future residents. So I think we're assuming that 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 we're gonna have additional development for 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 new users, or or nu- new citizens. Uh, this application proposes ten percent of the units as affordable, so fifty-eight under the under the under the current scheme. And I wanted to re- remind you that um with Glenn's help, we also introduced some mapping in a category um of possible housing opportunity areas. By by and large, the 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 developed corridor of 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 hot metal. But but that's what that blue outline is, and this property does fall within that blue outline. Um, it, we're gonna talk about economic development in a second, but but this same section does talk about equating economic development for ha- for diverse for certain housing, typically housing that's not single family related, but more higher density housing. That that higher density housing can be considered econo- economic development to Sims Bay since it typically typically the word in the P O C D produces more in tax revenue than it does in services.
Can I ask a question? So A says lower and moderate income housing. My understanding is this isn't besides the affordable housing units, nothing else in there is gonna be moderate.
No, 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 no. In this in this case, they're and they ca- their 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 proposal is to do eighty percent ha- half of the fifty-eight units at eighty percent of A M I and half at sixty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Other than those fifty-eight, the others will be marketed right.
Correct.
And I don't think we would cons- I don't I don't know. How do you define moderate?
Well, how much is that single family home gonna go for rent?
Yeah, my 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 po- my point of that was 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 just to get that section.
Okay.
Wasn't suggesting that, the I mean, there are.
In that state.
There are twenty-eight A B C D E F G H I J. I mean, I I didn't grab them. I really grabbed it to show you um the possible housing opportunity areas.
And the higher concentration of uh units doesn't really bring more revenue to the town because it's a it's a rental. It's not a single family home. So the taxation will be different. So it's actually costing more money to the town to handle the residents and provide the.
So there's a fiscal impact study that that the applicant that's attached, um and that will be something that the the that we're all considered to ch- talk about.
Also, what are the traffic uh implications on this? You said you're not gonna talk about the transportation, but we're talking
We can talk traffic.
five hundred and eighty units.
We can talk traffic.
Multiplied with two vehicles with with those and Hope Metal is gonna is already congested.
Yep.
So we are talking really clustering residential units on one side of the town. So we are creating a cumbersome uh event for all the residents that live on that side of town. We are only only concentrating on on the development itself, but we also have to look at how it this affects the whole town, right? So uh residential, uh it's already enter the impact on the schools, right? We're talking five hundred and eighty units. And you cannot tell me that only ninety-six kids gonna be able to go to that school. The uh Latimer Lane already doesn't have that uh um into their develop development plan. So where are all these kids gonna go? And all the activities in town? We're not building anything. We only have one ambulance in town. How are we gonna service service all these five hundred and eighty units multiplied by, let's say, two people? A thousand people that you have. I mean, the.
I think that's for the commission to to hammer out. Yeah, uh 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 I'll let the the applicant can address the traffic when when I'm finished.
Quick question. Before we move on, the affordable housing, what is our minimum? We have like a minimum number that we ask for?
We do not have an inclusionary requirement under our zoning code. We it's called an uh an inclusionary zoning requirement where where you would set some floor, ten percent, twelve percent, eighteen percent, five percent. So we do not. It is a recommendation in the P O C D that the zoning commission consider adopting a text amendment to incorporate that, but there is not.
And ten.
This is this is essentially negotiated in request.
I may remember the training by mildly differently. But um the ten percent is the minimum for us to to stay where we're at, right? Or to to hit our.
We again, we have so 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 no, I mean, um we have a goal of, I mean, we have a we've kind of had a s- a stated statewide goal to get to ten percent of our of our total units under the under the state statute. Um, we have about five percent today. So we have, so if we if you relied on 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 private sector development to this, yeah, you have to approve a lot of units. So let's talk about conservation because the site does obviously have uh a a a goodly amount of 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 environmental elements on it. So it's just kind of mother and apple pie stuff, but we 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 take it very seriously here in Sims Bay. Um, we wanna protect how we use land. We wanna protect and conserve all of our natural resources, water quality, natural resources. Um, we wanna protect our biodiversity and our ec- ecological health. We wanna preserve open space. We wanna enhance our our ecosystems. Um, I thought this map w- 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 is is interesting um to show that we do have, there's obviously wetlands on the site. There is uh flood plain associated with the Farmington River. There is uh Deep's Natural Diversity Database mapped on here, the N D D V. Um, the arrow or the arrow, the um the star kind of helps show show the location. Um, I I would just ma- make make the comment that Paul made, which is I think it is noteworthy that that the application doesn't really extend the footprint of of the existing Hartford Insurance Company. However, there will be environmental review during the site plan process. When it's i- i- if this gets to that point, site plan will go to the will go to inland wetlands for review. Is there are um if there are adjacent wetlands for for the redevelopment. Um, P O C D includes as we as 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 Paul as as Paul started with, but I I did did wanna show you um show you the call out box where we say natural resources are important to us, scenic resources are important to us, our views and our vistas. And and we do specifically name Talcot uh the Talcat Mountain. And and we do say hillsides and ridge lines. People are always talking about the bridge line, the bridge line, ridge line, but we talk about that that natural feature in total. And we've got some nice graphics that 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 talk about a little bit. So so it's an important policy for sure. Um, when it comes to that, you know, back to the back to that overall policy, preserve and protect the characteristics that contribute to its overall ambience. We consider those ridge lines important characteristics in our community. Economic development, we have um, you know, strong economic development lanes. We wanna foster a dynamic and prosperous climate for economic development. We wanna promote economic development in Sims Bay in order to provide jobs, goods and services and and net revenue. Um, we wanna maintain strong financial situation. We wanna grow the grand list. I mean, that that usually gets emphasized the most. We wanna diversify the tax base and attract users that pay more in taxes than they do in services. So uh I I did I did submit the sta- the staff report for the zoning commission to you. Um, there's a there's a lot of a a lot of inside zoning baseball in there, but you know, by and large, we did have some comments on design and uh our our recommendations. We're asking the applicant to consider a greater mixed use approach to the site because we I I think that's what was anticipated originally in Harvard's since very Form Based Code. Um, we recommend some design changes where perhaps you could put some non-residential upfront at a at a at a lower size, at a lower height. Um, recommended considerations or revisions to the unit mix. It's a lot of multifamily. It'd be nice to see s- some alternative project, maybe more duplexes. We don't have a lot of duplexes in this community, for instance. Um, and then making some of those changes, might be able to remove some of of the units, decrease the uh impacts on schools and services. Also decrease um the the total parking lot areas areas outside as well. So we we had those. Um, uh when it when it comes to the P O C D, I think our conclusion was broadly broadly that we that that the P O C D expects development in this site. I I do not think it's a question of whether the site should be developed or not. I I I I I don't think the P O C D suggests that. The reason we adopted the Hartford Sims Ray Form Based Code in twenty fifteen is to direct development and redevelop the site. The question is back to on balance, what is that mix and and how, you know, what level of development, what level of density should be there? So kind of back to my my on balance slide, which is, you know, is the application on balance consistent with the goals and policies of the P O C D? And i- i- if so or if not, are there rec- are are there recommendations? And i- i- if so, or if not, are there are are there recommendations you could make uh to make it more so? So I I think I'll I'll be quiet.
I have a question. Um between Talcat Acres and this, um you you were gonna have to go over into what look like greens, green area. So um is there still gonna be a buffer between Talcat Acres and this development? Cause knowing um what that is from that side and looking out, you know, they have decks, they see trees right now. You know, are they just gonna see buildings or are the trees and and greenery is gonna be intact?
So um a little bit, a little bit of both. So there so sorry. So there is, like you said, there is a berm here.
Yeah.
And some dense vegetation. Um we are.
You got the homes right there.
So there is uh I don't know, six six units right there.
Is there better? Is there better?
Um
It might be nine.
Yeah, that yeah, it's fine. So.
You sure?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
So so when we take down, we are gonna have to take down this berm and that vegetation, but we intend on replanting that. So because that 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 berm basically comes all comes all the way across, but we're gonna we're gonna restore it and we're gonna replant that. These units and I know someone's gonna, if I get the wrong number, someone's gonna go all over me, but there's there's a a small number of units here. They are fifty feet from the property line. We're eighty feet from their property line. So um.
Which isn't a lot.
Eighty feet is probably the biggest side yard setback you would have in town, I'll venture. That's that's a guess, but I think eighty is a lot, especially for a single family home.
Well, I'm thinking between the properties.
It's eighty for us and fifty for them. So I guess a hundred thirty total.
Oh, oh. Thank you.
Um so the other the other thing too is one of our, you know, I I kind of I kind of mentioned just like a couple of design thoughts that we had when we did this. One of the one of the design thoughts that we we had as we progressed this was to put the less um I I hate using negative words, but whether it's um dense or obtrusive uses on the site because of the the neighbors, you know, we kinda we had a situation at the north. We we learned from that, talking to the neighbors on that side. Um and when we looked at this, we wanted to be respectful of that, so we came with our our less dense use. So we didn't go with an apartment building here. We didn't go with even duplexes. We went with single family homes, which we felt was the least um.
And when you say replant, cause right now, those are tall trees.
You know. Very tall, very dense, yeah. So unfortunately, they we'll have to take a closer look as when we get to site plan like like George mentioned. Um they're on the berm. If they weren't on the berm, they could be maintained. So if some aren't on the berm, we'll have to look at that. The fact that they're on the berm, that that berm basically would would come into our backyard, so we'd we'd have to clean that up. We'll take a closer look at it. Obviously, we wanna maintain as much of that as we can. And whatever we don't, we wanna replant and screen and screen as well. We we do wanna be respectful.
When you re- alright, so when when you're replanting, you're replanting trees?
Oh, yes. Yeah. And yeah, I'm sorry. And obviously, like, you know, the the details haven't been worked out, but obviously, we we're trying to
Yeah, yeah, okay.
have open conversation with all the commissions now. When we replant, it will it will be, you know, trees. You're not just gonna put something something um low there. And some of the other things we're doing is is basically like between the houses here, we we were told by um I forget if it was probably inland wetlands and maybe some other groups and even the D E P to kind of minimize lawns too. Um so some of this vegetation, obviously, it's not worked out, but the reason we're showing like these this here in the middle was to show that we don't, we're not just gonna have lawns backing up to each other. We are gonna look at something something denser or planting taller trees or trying to create a more natural environment, whether it is part of a stormwater feature or not or whether it's um some type of um buffer for for certain, you know, birds or or pollinators or something like that. But the the intention was to have have denser vegetation along along the boundaries to the wetlands, between the homes and also against the neighbors.
Okay.
That was a long winded answer to your question, but hopefully I got there.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I re- I remember that meeting with 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 then, since I sit on that commission and you know, our concern always is that I mean, you know, you already addressed pulling out invasives, which
That was a comment from.
More more folks should be doing that, but um um yeah, and reducing reducing lawns is is also good because in 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 particular, cause that's chemical heavy and you know, you get you get runoff. And I know your engineer, I guess you're the engineer. We'll put a plan up there about stormwater management and it's it's supposed to be great, but um you know, that's that that's a good thing. And I would strongly urge you know, that that you plant native plants and and you know, we don't, we don't have a lot of ornamentals and and that and that type of thing um because we're, you know, I mean, it's never really, it hasn't been a natural setting, but we can certainly work more towards that. Um so I would I add s- I I would strongly recommend that. It's certainly one of the things in the B O C D about um you know natural plantings and things like that, so.
We'll have to we'll have to look back at um how we did with the master plan from the north, but obviously, that's where we'll have the discussions with all the commissions about if they want different trees tree species or whatever. The master plan that we did submit, they'd have um representative species in it, which is the same as the north, but if there's something there that we wanna change, we'll open to that discussion.
I I'm It doesn't make me comfortable when you talk about the north, but if this is could be something that.
Well, as far as like the tree species, so it's like, let's say there was something on the north that, like you you said, it's ornamental that you didn't like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right? When we get to that point on the wetland commission or even before, um you know, if it's let's not use that tree, let's use this one, we're totally open to that.
Right, yeah. No, we've done that before, cause I know um at Dorset Crossing, when they were gonna, I think they were gonna, they're building out there and they came to inland wetlands with a with a landscape plan, which we then took um and suggested replacements and which they were very amenable to because, you know, you're buying the plants anyway, but at least so you get the right ones, so. Um so I certainly hope we get to see that. So that's a heavy hint, George. I hope we get to see it. And everybody, but thank you.
Reddish will context, just wanna touch on the uh the existing berm um and foliage along the uh the corner by Hot Meadow.
Yeah, so you know, we kinda we kinda cut this image off like this for a reason. Um just to kind of remind you, except there there is a berm and some dense landscaping here um along the frontage. And you know, that was done obviously to screen the parking of the Hartford and things like that. Um we're gonna do our best to maintain as much of this as possible. Um we didn't wanna mislead and say we would maybe do that in this site. We'll try our best, but at least in this corner, we know we could do it. Uh because we're we're we have this wetland system here that really was a a leftover stormwater feature and we're respecting that as well. You can see the buffer is the blue line around it. Um so we feel that we're not gonna have to touch this berm or we're gonna leave this. That's why the houses don't like, for example, when George mentioned some of the changes that we're we're making modifications, one of them is like no dead ends in the street. You know, we didn't wanna loop this road back around. We said, let's make a dead end because we'll respect the berm, respect the vegetation, respect the wetlands. So we're gonna try to maintain as much of that as we can.
So so is the berm on the nor- uh north side, is that staying or?
I'm sorry, when you say the north side, oh, on this side?
The 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 other left there, yeah.
Um right right now, we're show, we're gonna have to work on that one. That was gonna be a bit trickier. If we can, we will. Um right now, we're showing the bike trail, kind of meandering around it or really through it. Um we'll have to probably work a little harder on that one, but if we do end up taking that down, um we'll probably get a lot of rebuild it. Some in some capacity, cause if anything, it could shield this parking lot or it could not get tall enough to impact the views of the ridge, obviously, but
Yeah.
whether it's a four or six foot high berm, we we feel we could we could do some work on that.
Yeah, it's an effective buffer now.
Yeah.
It is. Well, I right now, they're just they're they're really, they were incredible, hardly function for the when the office was there.
Yeah.
You said your plan is to replant the trees in the berm on the right? You said you're gonna dig up some and?
Yeah, on the on this side, we're we're gonna try to maintain wherever we can, but our
Will you, cause when you said the replanting, like where would they be replanted in the same place or are you?
Like I said, we're trying before.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that would be, the berm would be, the berm would most likely be removed on the side. Um because it is pretty, it is, it does, it is pretty substantial and it does come into the site. So this will probably be flattened out, but then the trees would be planted along there. So there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be trees on a berm anymore, but they there would be trees out there along the the buffer, I'm sorry, along the property line.
Hard, I'm sorry. A very basic question, if it was in the reading materials, I apologize that I missed it. At full capacity, how many residents will be on this site?
Um I guess we don't, I should say we don't know that point.
We don't need bedrooms, no. You know, you have assumptions on education.
We do know.
We know the better, yeah, we know the better, so.
You can give an estimate.
We know.
Yeah, there was an estimate on economic impact report.
Is it like twelve hundred? Hang on, I.
So as George is looking for that, um and it is around I guess it is somewhat between a thousand and twelve hundred.
Estimated, this is from your, this is from the applicant's fiscal impact study. Estimated
Alright.
residents generated.
Eleven hundred and eleven fifty nine, is that we're looking at?
One one five nine.
Oh.
Yep.
I think is the total.
Yep.
And
Between eleven.
They used on bedroom China.
Thank you. I knew it was there. It wasn't a track.
No, you're you're fine, because the the bedroom count is in. And actually, just, I don't really wanna get into the details of this report because I don't, this was prepared by my company. We had an expert that prepared it come up and speak to the zoning commission. I do encourage all of you, if you're interested to, that is online on the zoning commission, or maybe you guys have it too on on the application.
Yeah. They do.
Um and if you wanna hear the expert talk about it, it was recorded, obviously, at the zoning commission meeting. So we did do an economic impact study. Um it did, it did talk about the schools, so we talked the um I got I got the gentleman's title wrong last time, I believe, Assistant Superintendent Administration um to kind of corroborate some of the the numbers. Our projections were uh close to theirs. We did take another look at if our numbers were theirs, which theirs were a little higher. And it wasn't official, but our numbers did not change as far as tipping the scale. We looked at um impacts to town services, police, fire, ambulance. So I know that was mentioned by by a commission member. I I do urge people to not just kind of uh jump to a conclusion about about what that, what those impacts would be. It 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 is a detailed report. I do encourage you to look at, to read it. Like I said, listen to the expert if you wanna go back to the video. There is a point where the 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 scales tip over and it doesn't work, right? And that was our our thought when we were doing this report, have we tipped the scales? The answer, and I'm really generalizing here, the answer is that we did not tip the scales. When when it came to those those metrics and those those things.
So town services should be less than the revenue generated through tax based on the expert.
Yeah, yeah, I guess that's I guess that's a good way to put it. And and the same with the schools. So there are basically um net positive impacts when we looked at at everything. When you look at tax revenue, you look at property property tax.
Yeah. Including town services, ambulance, all that.
Yeah, right. So we looked, we looked at.
But based on the projected numbers in here, which I don't think myself to be realistic numbers. So when you multiply a lesser number with a smaller amount, it becomes smaller than what you're actually expensing. But in reality, and I'm also a subject meta expert myself. I've been developer for twenty years and I'm a C for for in construction, so I can tell you that this doesn't speak to the truth of what's gonna happen after the fact. And the number, how can you have hundred uh hundred kids for six hundred units?
I I would tell you that the 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 um the school district estimated
Yeah.
uh a range of a hundred to a hundred and thirty, a max of a hundred and thirty. So the these guy, their 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 report is fifteen less, but a hundred and thirty is what the our school district estimate.
That's a high.
But I can tell you the, if you ask, probably al- almost ninety percent of the residents gonna say that they came here for the schools. So I'm anticipating families coming here with probably two or three numbers, the the more than three, four hundred kids. How are we gonna accommodate?
First first of all, our numbers are based on the professional report, so I don't wanna go on speculation. It's it's a little frustrating to do that, honestly. But when our experts looked at these, they also consider single family homes are gonna generate kids, one bedroom apartments aren't, right? So they factored all that into consideration. I do encourage you to read the report instead of.
I did read the report, but also the numbers used here are usually for um uh developers to sell the units, not for rental units, because you cannot talk about diversity or range of housing and whatnot for rentals. You pretty much have a pass through uh residents that come in here, maybe live for two, three years and then leave. And you cannot really talk about the range of the quality of the housing, because you're gonna have a certain range between a few thousand dollars of rental that pretty much a group of people can afford, you know, you're not gonna have like a high end or low end in there. You're gonna have a ten percent of affordable housing only. So the 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 numbers that I saw and the statements that I saw in there are pretty much related to uh if you develop the site to sell in there. Also, I don't agree with not having it it at all commercial because the commercial size of the property really generates the majority of the tax revenue for the town. So if you move it, everything to strictly residential, and you're talking uh units, right? You're not talking single family houses that pay taxes on their own. The burden that it uh it brings to the town will be far greater than what we're receiving as a revenue. And a concentration of multiple uh condo units on one side of the town. So I don't think it's fair. I like her, I I try to look at it as a town, but what we had uh I I'm pretty much um uh my own feeling is on the east side of town, we gotta have this concentration of affordable housing and multiple, you know, hundreds of units in there, congestions, traffic, uh lack of, you know, activities for the kids and whatnot. And this is a community on its own. It's kind of a segregated community within our our town. We're talking about the trees and the areas and the improvements in there, but overall for the town, what is the improvement for the the remaining residents of the town, which actually came here and are paying taxes for for those services. So I would really like to see maybe a mixed uh commercial and residential and maybe uh the developer pitching in to helping to uh remedy those burdens for the services of the town that we are uh about to experience in the future.
Uh so George, what's the process for compiling our comments and suggestions? Are we doing that now or?
We're gonna, hopefully, there'll be a motion at some point and that's that.
That's what we're trying to do right now, so we.
That is what, that's what will be transmitted.
Yeah.
Yeah, so but I mean, are we are we putting a list together or we?
I'm listening.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what we have to do. Yeah, we'd have to make a motion of of of, I mean, yeah.
I'm listening. So let's let's do it this way. Let's start with land use mix. Let's start there. What's the consensus on whether this application conforms to the P O C D relative to the land use mix proposed? Talk amongst yourselves.
Well, well, form based code, it does meet the I mean, that that.
Where did it say a hundred percent residential?
There was something that said they could do that.
No, it said they could propose something else.
Propose it.
Yep.
They could propose it, correct? Something they could do.
Yes, yes. The I I would say, so just the finest point on it. Technically, it could do a hundred percent residential as a conservation subdivision.
And commercially, it isn't in the plan?
That's not what it is.
Which would be a far fewer apartment.
It's not, but this is, right, right. That's correct. So that's so that's not what it is, right?
Right.
So then they don't.
Less than.
Yeah. Yes.
So then they don't meet the form based code based on this, correct?
N- no, by definition, they they don't because they're asking for the alternative. So yes, you're you're right. The question is, is
Like what?
maybe less to the form based code, but more to the tune of the P O C Ds, what type of development do you think was anticipated here?
So
And it could go back, you got it.
The P O C D talks about um future developments being consistent with the area that they're being proposed, right? George, could you put up the the comparison of Hartford North and and Hartwell, not the the
The visual.
Aerial aerial view of both, yeah. My question is gonna be on density of Hartford South.
The visual, yeah, of course.
You know, if we take a look at, and I'm not sure what the measure is, you know, maybe total square feet divided by residential, um do we get a sense that Hartford South is the same density, more dense, less dense?
So we did, I'll I'll stand for the right one. We did do those calculations though, actually. Not going to have, unfortunately, the exact number for you, but um based on
So. We do that number. In the.
So if you do it over the hundred twenty four, hundred twenty five acres of this outsite,
Mm-hmm.
the density is around half of what the north side is. If you consider the actual net acreage of the sites and what we're considering really developable, it's virtually identical to the north side. It's roughly eight and a half units per acre. I forget the exact number, but that's roughly where it is on both sites.
Remember, the net the net and the gross numbers because the the south side is fif- fifty seven, fifty percent, fifty percent of it is 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 in wetland or constrained or or floodplain.
Hundred percent.
And one one other thing, if I if I could clarify one one thing, it's it's true that we're coming in for an alternate compliance plan. But um you know, when George went through like the six component zones, um I I think it I I think um it's not really completely accurate to say that like we don't fit any of those. We don't fit the right combination, I guess. Let's put it this way, our main our main D V, our main reason, let's see, let's see if you could, we'll agree on this. The main deviation in our application is the um component of transitioning from some type of commercial to residential. So I would go out on a limb and say that if it wasn't for that, the the other two component zones are component zones that are there.
I think that's a that that's fair.
Alright, thank you.
The fact that there is no commercial, the commercial would make it
Maybe maybe.
Fully conforming.
For right, right. I guess that's what I was trying to say.
Full.
Or maybe meeting expectations from twenty fourteen.
Yeah, perhaps, I think that was the discussion then for sure.
Um.
But as we know that there's other places that have had this difficulty, yeah.
Yeah, P O C D also mentions in a number of places that uh new developments should enhance the physical characteristics and the sense of place, Simsberry. Um during our pre-work for the revision to the current P O C D, we held number of public input sessions, telephone, uh survey, in-person workshops. And every time the 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 loudest voice was the thing we're soreest about, well, second. First was the Wagner property, second, the apartments in the south end of town. I can't ignore what the town is telling us, they're saying enough. Um and how how does this propose this application enhance Simsberry control?
So I think right now what we have is a hundred twenty-four acres of, you know, call it dilapidated land, right? There's overgrown trees, there's asphalt that is breaking, it's an ugly fence that runs across the property. This application cleans up the property completely. It as Paul um showed you, it 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 keeps the view or you know maintain the view for the most part of the ridge and provides a finished product for the town to look at to look at, um instead of kind of, you know, a forest and asphalt. That's that's how I think it kind of it transforms the property.
So in a way, you holding the town hostage that need to be developed, but that's when you acquire the property, it was in a better shape, right? So wouldn't it the developer leave it for seven, eight years sitting in there and getting into that bad shape? Because I I remember when Hartford was there, it was not so much overgrowth, right?
No, I I will.
So I know that you maintained the paths towards the road, but now using that as an excuse that we need to develop, we obviously need to develop it. That's the reason we're having this discussion, we're just discussing what type of development should go in there. But not really the excuse that you need to develop to uh we ha- we have to make a quick decision and do hundred percent residential just because we need to clean the overgrowth in there. Because we can also discuss that that overgrowth is due that to you as a developer leaving that land getting overgrown over these years in there, not maintaining it.
I I wouldn't necessarily agree that we're holding you hostage to to develop this.
Well, because you said we need to develop it because it's overgrown and not pleasant to uh to look at, but it's not pleasant to look at. Am I the landscaper for that property? No, am I the owner? No. So who is responsible for maintaining that property is the one who owns the the land, right? So it's easy to leave a property in a uh degraded state and then uh si- make up an excuse that you need to develop it and uh push us to approve like a hundred percent residential development.
I think actually what Bill was saying is what what um how does it enhance? I think that was what he what he was explaining how in his opinion it enhances. Um and so that's what they were saying is, you know, so.
You know, I I have, you know, this idea of an enhancement would be something that that uh that whole community
Mm-hmm.
could benefit from.
Yeah.
Uh not just the residence of a particular development, um.
Yeah, it'd be nice if you have some kind of commercial or.
I guess something that uh yeah, that everyone could benefit from, um.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah.
But also there is some uh.
Like a place to view, is that what you're saying, like a like a good spot where people could?
Or yeah. Yeah, so that other residents can come or giving some facilities. So this is really for the residents of that uh reach, right? So to use the facilities and whatnot. So the rest the rest of the residents of the towns can just go around and admire them and uh like uh they're not like any tennis courts or basketball courts or something that they can go and participate or swimming pools.
Yeah, but you know, I'm gonna push on that, like I don't want somebody coming to my backyard and play tennis, like it's it's I'm this, I'm probably gonna be very unpopular on that.
No, I hear what you're saying.
It's it's not park, it's private property for residents.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, they're not gonna open up their clubhouse to be Simsberry Farms.
So you have face one.
But you know what I mean, like let's talk about the use, the land.
But you put. Yeah.
I think the problem that we've heard from townspeople is the density of apartments and the height of the apartments.
Yeah.
So those are the two things that I think we are opposed on the P O C D.
Totally. I agree.
And it and it was the amount and it was the amount of the the amount of apartments.
We're missing the vista of the hillside. Correct.
I believe in the survey, it was at least fifty-two percent, it could have been sixty-two percent of respondents said that we have too many apartments.
Right.
Um but my biggest concern is we're gonna have this whole swath of rental property in that part of town and there's no option. It 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 it's it contradicts our diversity of housing, I believe uh if we don't have uh if there's no option to own real estate in that part of town.
For me, it didn't it doesn't bother, I think having apartments or residential, I think that's the mix. I think the one-story apartments will help the longer-term aging population who don't wanna own a home and be stuck to that.
Little people that wanna own a home and build equity.
Because we have tons of homes available. When we move out, move into the apartments, no, I'm kidding.
Yeah, I mean, you it's a pretty big swath when you look at all the development down there, it's all inventor inventory.
I do think that when missing commercialized.
And there is one further down the road too.
And and.
I like the idea though of the duplex, the dup- I I I do like that, that was um you know, so that you do have yeah, the homes, the duplexes and the apartments, so there is some.
You know, the idea of the mixed use was to
Yeah.
kinda create another town village.
Yeah.
A place, right?
A place, right, right.
Now now it's a bedroom.
Yeah, I agree. Without the without the commercial, yeah.
Um I I don't, that that is not consistent with the P O C D.
Yeah, I would agree, that's where my hangup is, it's the residential focus.
Mm-hmm. That's what we're liking in town, really having a good downtown, a place that people can gather.
You run the risk of creating a south end of town as the new center of town.
Small shops and.
I- if you abide by uh you know, true mixed use uh approach.
Yeah, I would, I I agree, Bill, I think the original thought behind this was um including the north property was gonna be mixed use and I don't think it's uh seen as economically viable for um to develop that way, so it becomes, you know, a hundred percent residential or now there's an assisted living there, which I guess we could stretch as commercial. Uh but now, you know, I think what's what's happening here now is that 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 calculus was done and now it's like, well, you know, we need to put in a hundred percent residential to uh to make the nut, if you will, as we used to say in business and uh you know, I I would agree, I don't think I don't think that's um in in line with or on balance with the P O C D.
Right. George, can I ask a question and I and I just bear with me, cause I know people are but aren't we seeing a trend of that mixed use? It's not, so part of the issue, right, is is that ten, twelve years ago when some of these things in town were proposed as mixed use, what we're finding is that they're not finding people to come in and take that commercial property? And that isn't there a trend to move away from mixed use or did I get that wrong from a previous meeting?
Um the applicant might answer differently than me. Um so so yeah, I mean, I think there are there are there are lifestyle trends and characteristics kind of post-COVID and really even before COVID that, you know, there's changes in our habits, we we buy retail products differently. We work from home differently, um you know, we 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 do we do hybrid. So so certainly the 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 office demand and the retail demand is different than it was. Um and it's 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 changed and so I do think um that the old, you know, the old way of, you know, building these the place in Canton or the or the place in Avon or the place in South Windsor where you've got these kind of mixed uses, it's changed a little bit for sure. Um but that's the expectation, I think, in the P O C D and in the and and in the code.
You mean the Simmsbury Town Center Code?
Yeah, the Town Center Code, so so I mean, I I mean, I think I I've let the applicant respond, I mean, they they they're the ones who who are, you know, have twenty-two thousand square feet unleased right now, um so it'd be interesting to hear from them as to why that is and why there's no residential component.
Mm-hmm.
But the fact is is that it's 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 different, I mean, those marketplaces are different. We've got lots of, we've got extreme office vacancy in this community right now.
Yeah.
We do, empty buildings in front of how the forest, um I'm Hill Pond, and that that is that's fact.
Right, can can somebody come in, what about the empty commercial?
Yep. Yeah, um so as George mentioned, we have, so we have the smaller retail building as well as the larger one, which I'm sure you see is under construction. The larger one, we were just able to successfully lease to Goddard, which uh some of you may know and uh they hopefully will be moving in um and preparing for next school year.
So that lease is signed?
That's signed, executed everything.
Set up a boom.
What is Goddard?
Like yeah.
But.
What is it?
The children's daycare school, yeah, pre-K kinda thing, yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Okay, okay, okay.
Pre-K daycare.
Okay, okay.
Okay, okay.
Um the other building has been sitting vacant for three, roughly three years, maybe two, two to three years now. Um I the broker that is representing us on that property come up with a list of every user that has come to us with some sort of interest, it's roughly seven or eight users, none of which have landed. Um I don't, you know, I can't tell you exactly why or you know what's why they don't want that spot particularly. I just, it hasn't worked and it's been it's been daycares, it's been cafes, it's been coffee shops and all sorts of users and no one has worked unfortunately. Um and that speaks to kind of our concern for the south side. And I know the intent and the argument is the intent of this outside was for a mixed-use development. Um if we thought it would work, it's what we would design to and what we would build to. Uh that was contemplated in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. That was, you know, before COVID and the office market fell apart and even the retail market fell apart. So what we know works because we have two hundred ninety-nine fully leased units on the north side is is residential. Um and we have apartments and townhomes in the north side. We tried to mix it up here with duplexes and single-family rentals, um and obviously keep some of the apartments as well. Um but we know if we build it, that will work. So naturally as the owner, that's that's what we're comfortable with and that's kind of, that's why you're not seeing commercial, that's not that's why you're not seeing retail is cause we're just not, we're not confident with it.
Have you thought about, I still see for me that four stories, I I
Right.
I'd wanted to match the other, I I just I I don't like the idea of four stories.
Considering the three stories have the big stories?
Yeah, I know, they're big, I know, I just.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah.
And there's and there's no dedicated view spot for the people who live there and there's no there's nothing, my issue is it doesn't feel like it's a community that you're really, it's it's more just like as many houses as we can fit in here. So you could we talk about walkability and we've mentioned it a couple of times and I have a hangup on it because where where are we walking to outside of concrete, they'll walk on concrete and then they'll go back inside? What is the walkability of this and how does that help Simsberry in any capacity? Cause I know you say if we if it's built, it's gonna become a something nice to look at, but what is there to look at outside of the apartments that people in town are saying that they don't like? Do we have something for them, is there any kind of site? What, those are just, that's just water, what is this, the two circles, mm-hmm?
Yeah, I I I don't think this is gonna necessarily answer your question, but from from an amenity to the to the public, really, it is just a extension of the bike trail for the community itself, and I don't know that that's what you're asking.
Yes.
There is a clubhouse here with amenity space here.
Okay.
Um would you like me elaborate on that, is that something that you were interested in here?
Okay, so they they have a clubhouse.
So there there's a seven thousand square foot clubhouse, which is about fifty percent bigger than the one at at the north, which is very nice by the way. Um obviously the plans to be developed, but right now we're showing a pool to this side. Um these plan, this this is actually a slightly older plan, but um different multi-use sport, you know, whether it's basketball or or whatever and also pickleball or something like that. So we are looking at at least a pool and some um court space behind it. The the clubhouse itself could be like rented out for parties, for example, so there'll be space if you wanted to like have a bigger kid's birthday party and what have people, you know, your apartment can't handle that or something, you could rent out the space within that. Um also obviously showers and small kitchenette um stuffs, I'm sorry, I kinda mixed those together. The kitchenette for when you're having the party, the shower is in the changing space for when you use the pool, so you don't have to do that at home. We also host uh and I'm not sure exactly how often, but we do host community events in the clubhouse on the north side so that would absolutely continue to the to the south side as well. And the the point of the central green on both sites um was to basically encourage community um meeting space that will develop organically, I know that was that was a phrase that um we were actually encouraged to do that on the north and that's and it it made sense once it was said that when you when you create these kind of open spaces here, it's to invite people to, you know, have a picnic, um community football game. Internal farmer's market, whatever, um but for the residents. But it was the central this central green, um similar to the to the north, was intended to become an organic community space that could evolve into whatever the residency fit.
Where all these residents gonna go and shop? I mean, we let's say they all decide to go and get coffee and we have three uh coffee shops in town. So they were gonna go, that's what my concern was, you know, we don't even have like a a small coffee shop or donut shop or so. We'll have Dunkin' Donuts down the road, but that's gonna get crowded, I guess.
I think like like Holden was saying, when they were looking for the north for that residential building, if if they found the right tenant that would move in there, they're all for it. I mean, they they would do that, but.
It's also for the timeline, I believe that you guys build the uh commercial space after the most of the units were built, so towards the end, so that would explain some of it being vacant at this point of time.
Um the first, I I don't remember numbers, but the there were there were metrics within the approval that the first building had to be built after X amount of um C O, so that the that's why the first building's been up for a while, that that was had to be built fairly early in the process. And then the last building that won this under construction now obviously came later and like Holden said, now the Goddard School is gonna take that over.
So I mean, it's hard for me to think eight hundred units, if you take the five-eighty and the two-sixty-six over there to not have any commercial space whatsoever, not being able to handle it.
We're shocked that we haven't been able to get tenants on that either, we would love to have a coffee shop there or a local something where they would, they're they advertise for it, they have. We're losing money because we don't have it. They have a building built fully ready to go and they can't get a tenant to move in there, so they don't wanna repeat the mistake here, plain and simple.
So another concern of mine is see how that curve there, when I drive in it in the the north entrance of the complex in there?
Mm-hmm.
It's right behind that wooded area and it's right next to the entrance to the Little Latimer Lane, which is leading to the school. And there is a lot of traffic in the morning with buses and whatnot and it's around the curve, so there is not much visibility. And adding those two entrances there that gonna be crowded, let's say the rush hours, might create some congestion on the on that curve, I suppose.
Aren't that the existing, the existing entrances from where Hartford is at?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was an existing.
There are existing entrances, but you adding the traffic to those entrances.
The traffic needs to be there though.
So this was.
Yeah.
Like how many people would go into that office every day?
Traffic was greater at at during the office, um and have a have a
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trip generation is different and the time is different, but but yeah, this generates less trips.
Before the Hartford, it's all been worse, so.
Right.
So. Yeah, so.
And spread out, right, it's not like ten thousand people showing up at the same time.
Right, potentially, yeah.
I'll answer that a little bit, I don't I I don't wanna get it's too far into the weeds, but this would be a this would be a right out only. Um it does have a left in and a right in, but it is a left out, I'm sorry, a right out only, so you can't take a left out.
Right.
Cool.
Um this would be reconfigured, obviously part of our approval from the D O T, who is the owner of the road. When we um permitted the north, we actually permitted uh a max use of the south, maximum use of the south as well at the same time. So the D O T approval for the south is for a different mix because we literally, it was something that was already done and we maximized it. Um if you convert what the D O T says we could handle for traffic to strictly residential, we could have over a thousand units on the site.
Is there a um a build-out plan, uh meaning you know apartment buildings, duplexes, single-family homes?
Preliminary. Nothing concrete yet, we expect the build-out to take roughly four to five years based on what the north side took.
Do you expect to do all the apartments first and then the duplexes and single-family homes?
We probably start in the apartments, not to say we would complete the apartments before anything else was started. Um but we would probably start with some sort of
Um, but we would probably start with some sort of lay of the apartment.
It is like a phase one and phase two here in the plan that says the facing subject to change prior to and during construction.
Yeah, what you know, one of the things that we run into and and not this application specifically, but in an affordable housing application. Okay, you have an affordable component, but it's not in uh uh submitted under uh eight dash thirty G. I wish. Thank you for including that. That helps us move in the right direction. Um, we've had developers that wanted to build the market rate homes or units first.
Hmm.
And the the uh the affordable ones last. And you know, it didn't help us get the the mix of residents that was uh expected. Um. Which ones make the most money for you?
Arguably the apartments. You know, the single family and the duplexes are untested, so we shall see, but um the apartments have done very well for us in the north side at least.
There's there's, you know, several other single-family home developments in town that uh some have gone pretty good. Which maybe having some issues, but uh I would expect, what would I expect?
I mean, really, from an infrastructure standpoint, it makes sense to start in the front, right? So you're gonna start with some of the apartments, but like Holden was saying, I you're not gonna see all the apartments bu- uh built before you start seeing duplexes and single-family. There there'll there'll be there'll be a mix there and that was kinda that was true of the north too. Um, the way we worked our way around, you did have a mix before all the apartments were built.
And probably start from the back where the single families are, so that you don't get the construction traffic at the left side and then the right side.
But to your point, Bill, it is it possible to disperse as you're building and renting that that the affordable housing be part of that? So that you're you're putting affordable in with yeah, I mean, I think that's a very.
So that 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 is that's a that's a standard agreement now. So at the time of site plan, they will submit
Oh, okay.
an affordable housing plan, which lays out
Everything, perfect.
to to the zoning commission. But but the staff has always asked for units to be dispersed and the units to be equivalent equivalently prorated uh incorporated at at during development.
Pro-rata. So the who who's asking for an affordability plan? Is that part of the application requirement?
So it no, uh under a standard eight thirty G it is. And so so we've got the applicant has agreed to provide affordable units. Essentially, in this case, they've offered to provide affordable units consistent with the eight thirty G program standards.
Right, yep.
So at the time of the site plan, they'll submit to us an affordability plan that lays out how those are prorated, what units they apply to, draft deed restrictions, those kinds of things. That'll ha- that's what that's what's contained in the affordability plan.
Now Glenn, you know, Glenn Chalder had we had talked about affordability plans in general.
Yep, yep.
And he said he was gonna supply to the town uh a version that he's seen
Yep.
before. Have you received that?
And he has. I do, I have.
Okay. So I still have a question. For the affordable uh housing units in town that have for affordability plans, who manages it?
So the affordability plans require a a um a a a deemed or identified manager, could be the developer, could be a third party.
Is that specified in the plan?
It is. It is. It's specified who is the manager of it, exactly. Uh, and then there's an annual reporting requirement typically in the.
Have you received those reports?
We have received them from uh we get them from Aspen Green, yes, on an annual basis. We do not get them. We do not get them from Cambridge Crossing for 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 reasons.
It's it's a kind of a kind of a head project.
We don't get them from Cambridge Crossing for for lots of reasons. And um the only other one is Hendrix Lane and those are um you know, those are those their owner occupied. So that's a little bit more of a challenge. There's no once the applicant is out, it's would the answer is no at at Cam- at uh Hendrix Lane.
No, but that.
Yeah, that's a different issue, but yeah.
Different issue, yeah. And I guess along those lines, it is important to note that Silverman is uh they do intend to own it. They're a long-term holder and operator. So they 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 um operate the north and they intend to do out the south too. They're not looking to sell this. Correct.
Correct.
For us to meet for an editor. I didn't I didn't feel an elbow, so I guess that would be right.
What's the value of the project?
We estimated roughly hundred fifty million dollar construction cost, which is at somewhere around, I think, around three hundred thousand a unit construction.
Are you getting a construction loan from bank or?
Chances of for most of our residential projects, we do. So I would imagine, yes.
Are we requiring to you for you to post like a bond so that for performance and completion of the project, I guess?
I'm yeah, I'm sure. Typical, yeah.
Little touch.
That'll happen during the site plan process. We'll we'll bond.
Well, we don't want to start and then just give up in the middle of a project.
Certain agreements. Right, right.
Now, we always say that, Angel, but it doesn't always work even with the bond. Now the uh do I understand all the all the roads within the development are private?
Correct.
Yes.
Do you have access to Farmington River from there?
No. Open for us to look at, but it we we've been looking at that for several years. It's very difficult. We would like to. Um, but we're not even touching that right now here. If there is gonna be a connection, we've struggled to get it at the north for several years. We've tried different avenues. Um, if it does somehow happen, and I'm not saying there's any magic plan to do that, it would probably be at the north.
Mm-hmm. Is there a visitor's parking lot? Is that the one to the left where it replaced the buildings or that's for residents?
That well, I I guess it's it's mixed together. We haven't looked at like designating residents first visitor, but um our parking ratio is just about two per unit. It's actually four four spaces shy of two. So um looking at just the apartments, the townhouses and the houses we figure are are set. Um, because the the garage space we made the driveway is big enough for two cars. Um, so the apartments are at a ratio of two. Um, parking is tight at the north. We're not we're not gonna deny that. It's something that's that's come up. We've addressed it with some site plan modifications in the last two years. Um, this ratio is still that two is actually consistent with the town, right? That's not something that's like form-based code or anything like that, but it is it is consistent.
So you you advise that you've identified a number of of kind of recommendations um.
That that that's that's probably the way to go. Just simply it's simply in a motion articulate those recommendations. You can you can make a finding that I don't want bores in your mouth. Um, part of your finding would be those recommendations.
So maybe what we can do is let's let's so one of the things that I heard was we don't like the four stories. Is that are people don't like or?
So let me do let me do my my it's it's a shortlist actually when you when you when you come down
Okay. Yeah, I'm really sure.
come down to what you what what you've articulated. I think they can be encapsulated in one. So so in in general, um concerns about housing diversity and density, ownership options and reduction of apartments.
Yeah, and I would also like to add in about, you know, um
Uh-huh.
the native plantings, make sure that, you know, that's all part of it. I know that was mentioned. But if we're gonna make a motion, I think I think it's important to articulate that. That there will be the removal of invasives and um a landscape plan that's uh you know, native native plantings and trees. That um there's if there's any question, they can always turn to conservation.
Would we just and I agree with you, Joe, but would we have to? They've already said they were gonna move the remove the invasives. Do we do we say again? I mean cause we're trying to give them recommendations of things. I I don't find either one.
I think you you can. It's not a lot of noise. It's not a.
Okay, it's fine to do that.
No, why don't we like if we're gonna do a motion, do a motion saying we're agreeing with the following that states natives, conserving, et cetera, like affordable housing is really good. It's aligned to P O C D, conservation efforts with invasives being removed, local being planted.
Yeah.
Right. I think they did a good job of protecting the ridge. I would recommend that they look to.
And they moved the building. I like that they moved the two to.
It do. For me, I would recommend that we look to get more hillside. And how they do that is up to them, but I would say look to the hillside, which would could be that four story.
Yeah, I want I wanna go so far as saying I don't want it's four story, but I I don't.
That's me.
So so under uh under protection of of scenic views, um preservation of the hillside to include consideration of reducing the height from four stories to three stories.
Perfect.
Yeah, very well.
That's good.
And then for me, we kept on talking a lot about being very dense with the residential. And we have those two three-story apartment buildings up front. Like there is a part of me and I know that the developer needs to run a business and make a profit. But there is a part of me that would like to recommend a stronger mix of commercial to residential. And that might have been your first statement.
Yeah, I was that would I was just gonna say land use mix. I mean, that's that's there there's real consensus. I could I I'm from the group on on on.
Yeah. That's it. So I don't wanna say where, but it is the mix.
Yeah, I think it gets it. I think it accomplishes two of two of the identified issues. One, which is
That's it.
land use mix to be to be better conformance with the expectation, but also it it for Bill's point, it 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 helps build a potential better place. And you used the word village, but
Yep.
but with with that introduction, um you know, and 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 coordination of those different kinds of uses, it makes it it potentially could make it more vibrant, notwithstanding market conditions and all that.
I I agree, but one of the concerns I have is if they reduce the number of apartments, the apartments on the north side are very expensive. And I know they're gonna have an affordable housing unit, but they're moderate income earners. It's really difficult to but I I just know a young couple that moved into town and they both working and and make you know, a good salary and they had difficulty finding affordable rents and they wanted to rent in Simsbury. And when you're talking thirty-two hundred, whatever it is, you know, that my concern is does that then jack up rental prices, which then peak you know, you you're not gonna
Vicious cycle.
It's a vicious cycle, right? And I'm not I I like the mixed use. Don't get me wrong, but I one of my concerns on the other end is
Yeah.
then we're not getting a diversity of housing stack. We're not getting a diversity of people moving into town because you're only gonna be able to have higher income people renting in a place that's supposed to have a diversity of stack and a diversity of people in there. So I you know, I don't know where
I know.
where it stops. Do you know what I mean? Is 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 cause like Julie said, they've got a
That's right.
it's business and we get that.
Well, and it's free market. The market is going to dictate the prices. I mean
Right. True.
I'll just be crazy. You might build a whole bunch of units and you you might flatten out the market and drop the prices. You run that risk. Right?
Certainly a free market, but it's influenced with uh.
Supply and demand.
Well, no. But not only that, the Hartford, you know, Simsbury form-based code.
Correct.
Okay. Other regulations and uh other stipulations that we're trying to introduce, that's not pure market forces. So how do we? Now, there is a theory, I'm sorry, Marcus, that says, you know, with affordable housing, if you include it in your in your mix, you're right, Julie, you're gonna charge more for the other units. So you're actually driving a uh you know, a segment of the population out of the market.
Right.
You're you know, you 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 make and this is not, you know
Correct.
That's my point. Yeah.
Not 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 against their application. This is just, you know, economic theory.
This is not a developer.
Yeah, right.
Exactly.
And uh so it ends up hurting the people it's designed to help.
Right. So that's a regulate, yeah, that's a regulation problem from the state. That that's not something we're gonna solve.
Alright, so where are we going here? What else did you have captured from our conversations, Mr. McGregor?
Sense of place, scenic views, land use mix, um the non-residential component, not four stories, ownership options, housing diversity. That's all I have.
Angel did make a comment about um developer supporting town.
In certain way, because that's.
Certain ways. So I don't know. That was one thing that I heard you say and I don't know if you wanna.
I mean, if you talk about it, we have to get the opinion of even the uh the school, uh public school, uh maybe the superintendent or maybe the
So that's included in the package.
Or the education of something.
We've had comments from them.
We did get that.
Yeah, they did.
From the school.
We've had comments from them.
They can accommodate all these kids. I mean, I know they're considering hundred kids, but uh they've already been saying now that the schools are overwhelmed. Latimer Lane didn't build many new uh classrooms to accommodate additional students. So where are all these kids gonna go? They we have to drive them to Tarryville or other because we decided to keep Tarryville school, right? So that's gonna bring extra cost for the town.
I mean, I don't wanna speak for the schools. They 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 provide some of that in in writing, but I mean, the short answer is is there is enough capacity generally, but it but that capacity by each incremental residential unit eats that capacity up. For Latimer Lane, for instance, there's capacity there, but if this eats that capacity up a lot quicker than the schools would have anticipated. Um, they have also said that that they are concerned about the 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 demand uh particularly on special needs areas, which which is costly. Now, we can make one other point. The the school district, um I mean, I think the student generation, they're close on, but the school district in terms of cost per pupil disagrees with the with the applicant's fiscal impact study uh in terms of the 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 cost per 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 pupil cost number that that they use school district disputes. So uh I I don't know how they're gonna address that in front of the zoning commission. Um, I think they're gonna have an opportunity to do that, so.
I think you'd have to, well, I I can't tell what to do. I I mean, you need to go by what the school.
So anyway, just to so.
But to the point, the density.
Schools didn't take their fiscal pa- pa- pack study and said we we completely agree with it. They they had some issues with particularly the the cost of services and the cost of pupil. So so that is a disagreement that the zoning commission will have to um sort out.
But it'll be up to them to sort out.
Yeah, it is. It's their job.
They they have both estimates at this point, so because we don't know what the.
It's their job. It's their job.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're just doing P O C D and P O C D just had the net impact.
Yeah.
Yeah, the net.
Being assessed and making sure that, you know, it was all there.
Well, because the other.
Oh, yeah. And so that that's been done. Okay.
It's done.
But it's debatable.
Yep.
Can we make a a recommendation for a higher number of affordable units for what you were saying here? Cause I know that
You couldn't.
ten percent and I I feel like it was in one of the trainings. It's like that's our that's our number that is just keeping our head above water. For the number that we want to reach as a town, we have to go above ten. So if we're gonna have a place that, you know, if we're gonna have a place, then why are we not going to have more affordable units to reach a threshold that we as a town wanna reach or need to reach?
Mm-hmm.
And yeah, ten percent doesn't do it. And and like you're saying, there's there's families that are couples that can't afford it. So.
But that might not meet affordable though, is what I'm saying. I the 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 example I gave, they wouldn't have met.
They wouldn't get affordable.
Oh, no, they wouldn't have met affordable. They made too much money and still had a good.
They made too much money.
They still can.
See, those are the people that are getting hurt.
That's right, Bill. That and and they make good mon- they make decent money. It's not like but they are, you know, well above affordable.
They're caught right in the middle.
Yeah.
Right. And um yeah.
Still don't have enough.
Mark, let me give you my thoughts on that because, you know, I for whatever reason, this affordable housing thing, something resonates with me. Um, i- in our affordable housing plan that we issued, I think in twenty twenty-one.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, we said that we needed to add ninety units in the next five.
Ninety, ninety-eight or nine. It was ninety, the number ninety.
The next five years, in the next five years.
One percentage point.
And that was that that was to take our affordable housing ratio, which was around four point seven at the time, up to five, up one percentage point. Okay? Now, I never thought that that would be borne by a single project. Okay? So I did the numbers, okay? Cause sometimes the numbers actually hurt our affordable housing ratio.
Mm-hmm.
But in this case, with five hundred and eighty total units being added to our base stock, okay? Fifty-eight of those affordable, it actually raises our affordability ratio by twenty-five basis points. I'm happy with that. Now, I've always been the one that says to the 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 applicants, why not twenty? Why not fifty? Why not a hundred? I know why. They can't make any money that way, okay? Um, so I personally, I'm I'm very happy that the ten percent was included. I don't know, you know, if you guys brought brought it to the tail of yourselves or it was a recommendation from somebody else, but uh it's consistent with the plan I conservation and development.
Yep.
So personally, I'm satisfied.
With the ten.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. I am too.
Okay.
And also looking at the this is just statistics, but you also in increasing the affordability changes the demographics on that side of the town. So we're pretty much deciding to concentrate affordability housing on the.
Well, only for this one, Angel. There's other places in town, in the north end of town.
Yeah, there are.
Yeah.
So i- it's it's it's.
Yeah, and affordability doesn't, yeah.
Right, the yeah.
Again, I think we have to look at too too much and what you know, who's getting caught. Yeah, anyway. Yeah, it's it's a tough balance.
Yeah, I think. No, I'm 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 caught up on the on the fact that the P O C D requires requires advises. uh an enhancement in the community for any redevelopment. I get your points, okay? I don't think it's that that significant. You know, something like uh providing some other townwide uh service to me would enhance the overall community. Like a new community center.
So that was included in staff comments where the applicant considers some um some some provision of 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 land or or otherwise, remember under state statute, we gotta be careful what we ask for, it's gotta be reasonable, it's gotta be
Yes, yeah.
it's gotta be all those things on it, you know, it's gotta be driven by the application, but but yeah, so that is, I think that's a a reasonable recommendation.
I know, yeah, I I I know, you're not trying to
You can't ask the applicant to build a community center, I I don't think, but I think
How about a library or a parking?
I think the land land for is re- is reasonable, potentially, yeah.
Just being snarky. It's nine o'clock, I should have
Yeah, not I don't wanna push it, but probably need a kind of a get out.
Yes, alright, so
So you took really good notes, do you have something drafted you can like ping to one of us so we can read it?
Bill does, Bill's usually the best.
I know, he's good, he's
You don't want me to do anything else, I can't.
I see she's already seconded you.
So I I I don't know, I I would also say that I don't know that you need to make some pure finding that it is or isn't con- conforming to
I I don't know, I you know what, we we have a responsibility as a commission, okay, the zoning commission has asked us for our input.
That that's
Right.
I think we should be definitive.
Which is nice that they have, I mean, I think there's um and I and Tony Bros is here too from zoning observing, but it I I mean, I was really glad that zoning did give it to us because in the past, we haven't gotten these kinds of things, so kudos to uh to the current zoning commission to get our opinion. So you wanna make it more formal, Bill?
Yeah.
Well, I think we should make a, you know, a motion with points.
Yeah.
Got it, alright.
Mm-hmm.
To address the points.
Yeah, you have the points.
I just don't know what you want, what the what the first sentence is.
Right, what's the first?
Well, I, okay, I'll put it on the table, uh just to get it started, I think on balance
Okay.
the application is consistent with the uh twenty twenty-four Simsbury Plan of Conservation and Development.
Right, with the following
With, yeah, uh with considerations for
Yeah.
Of consideration.
The following items.
The following recommendations. Which we've George has kindly scribed for us.
And those are for the zoning commission to take under consideration.
So I would say one an introduction of a mixed-use non-residential element elements.
Yeah.
Yep.
Two um protection of scenic vista with consideration for reducing the height, the story height from four to three.
Did you wanna say something specific about hillside or are you good with that? Vista?
I think protecting the vista, hillside, you know, hillside.
Okay, yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, the 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 scenic hillside and ridgeline vista is the is the one.
The stuff.
Right, right, we got we got
It's the hillside.
We got caught up on that, remember we had ridgeline in the regulation.
Yeah, that's
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
And that was interpreted as
Right, right, right.
the hill, so now we introduced hillside.
Yeah.
The hillside, right.
Hillside.
Hmm, that's why I just wanna be sure.
Alright, three. Um through my uh uh require additional discussion, what is your what is your sense of the unit mix for the residential, I'm not sure I got a clear I I
Well, I
Notwithstanding the introduction of a mixed-use element might change the residential unit mix because of of land planning and all those things.
I I think it's fine, I I just think there's an awful lot of uh apartments, but if if we're making the recommendation to drop it from four to three, then that would solve that.
If you're if you're dropping four.
Your eight units.
And add a commercial.
Yeah.
And add a commer- right, then I yeah.
Yeah.
We shouldn't rec- we shouldn't get any further involved with it then.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be if they if those things, then
Yep.
so I don't know how you tie it.
So George, I I think the the mix, I think we're in agreement is is nice.
Yeah, it is nice, I agree.
That that is the first time we've seen this, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what were our main issues with the north? Right, 'cause if we say we don't wanna do this again, the the what are the main components?
The north was that it took off the hillside and the and it was like in your face, like that was the problem.
Right, they seem to have solved
And they don't have
It was a scenic
Yeah.
They're parallel to the road, so it been blocking the
Right.
Right, and
These are perpendicular, they're at a parallel.
And a porch back.
And pushback, yes.
Porch back.
Purserack.
And the simulation that we saw was at four stories, so now it's at three.
So
Right.
Yep, we're assuming there's gonna be a little bit more, I mean, they protected a large
Yep.
portion of the hillside, it's just bringing it down a little bit to get a little bit more of the hillside under
The inverse of the scale, right. Yeah, 'cause at four stories, it's two, it's it's still
Underneath it.
It's high.
It's you can barely see it and then it's, okay, yeah.
But yeah, the mix was fine. Everyone complains about that, but you try
Alright, so when I when I drill all that down, those are the two issues.
Uh was there a a an ownership component?
Ownership issues, yeah.
You wanna you wanna add that as a recommendation, so um
I feel strongly about that, I you know, in 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 terms of uh diver- meaning diverse housing needs.
Housing diversity to include ownership options.
You had six hundred units, you can't buy a single one of them?
Options, okay, so that's three.
Options.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, George, can you put in there, please, that the uh telephone survey from twenty twenty-one, oh, I'm sorry, no twenty twenty-two, fifty-two percent of respondents said there were too many apartments.
But would that go, that wouldn't go in our motion, I don't bet that
See, so so uh
That would
So so that's data in there, I don't know that it it may, we, how should I say this? We didn't take that information and form a policy that said we have too many apartments. There's no there's no there's no P O C D policy that says that, we just say we want a diversity of housing product. So that was a sentiment of the community, for sure. But it is it is not contained in, there's no policy that that says that, that it's not a policy you guys adopt.
No, and I think that would be more of a public hearing for you to go and speak.
I mean, that's a policy you could have adopted, but it's not one you did.
I would also recommend maybe providing some other sort of benefit for the town.
Yeah, so the public benefit is also, yeah, so um
Oh, that was a waste, yeah.
That's a run.
I cons- I would just say consideration of the provision of a public ben- of a of a
As a homeowner, I can't wait to
Of an identified public benefit? That does that that doesn't make sense. That's probably not strong enough. Not sure how to say that. But consideration of a public benefit.
To yeah, to um enhance the sense of place.
I like that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's good.
That's good.
Sense of place is a term we use throughout the P O C D.
Right, on balance, the application is consistent with the twenty twenty-four Plan of Conservation and Development with consideration of the following. One, the introduction of a mixed-use non-residential element, including mi- a mixed-use non-residential element. Consideration of my handwriting is terrible, uh consideration of the preservation of scenic hillside and ridgeline. To include reduction story height from four to three. Consideration of housing diversity to include owner- ownership options. Consideration of a public benefit to enhance enhance sense of place, that's the motion.
So moved. And we're saying that it will be a a positive recommendation.
Well, you made the
You made the motion.
So no, it's just you you what you're saying is you on balance, the app you what you're saying is on balance, the application is consistent with the P O C D, except for these things.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
That's really what you're saying.
Right, right.
Yeah.
It, yeah.
Yeah, I don't
In general, it's consistent with the P O C D.
Right.
Yeah.
The following points would make it a hundred percent consistent.
No, you're
Correct.
All of them four stories tall if there were more houses to buy.
Yes, I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think the I think the zoning commission will understand that.
Yeah, I think so too.
So does
So this
I'll second that.
You got a second.
Sitting.
Alright, any
Sorry, I know you did, but you're not
I wanted to second something today.
I know, but you're not, you're not a
Next time.
Next time, man, I got you. Okay.
Any discuss any for any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, um I I still feel a sense of letting down a certain portion of the of the residents of Simsbury.
Okay, let me help you with this, so if that if that that's the case, then talk about it in terms of the diversity of housing product proposed and not just, I mean
No, George, people are saying large apartment buildings and big developments are not characteristic, physical characteristics of the town of Simsbury, that's what I hear.
I'm asking you, is that what the P O C D says?
I I think I can make it say that.
Okay, well then 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 make a
Because at the same time, we don't wanna change the town feel, right, we don't want the current residents to start moving out of town
Um
So
because of all this, this all the
So five.
Well, I mean, I think
You wanna say consideration of reducing the the total number of apartment units?
No, 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 I'm just I just I just want the commission and the
No.
Yeah.
the the record to show that
Right, they want
we have we have received significant input from a portion of the population, that large-scale apartments uh and and the 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 uh development in general
I got, I got.
not their vision for Simsbury.
Lunched it.
I'm not saying that it shouldn't happen.
Even though this was ten years in the making, but yeah, they
There are, yeah, it's not everybody, but it's a vocal group.
Right.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes. Good.
Yeah.
It's discussion tonight.
It's it's fair, and I mean, as for me, I think about growing up in Simsbury and if I spend, what is twenty years from now, are we gonna, what's gonna come of the next place, how many more of these am I gonna see before in the next twenty years? Like, do I wanna keep driving it, are we gonna build another one, it's like, I moved here in like oh three, right, so do I, I see one get built up, I I didn't love the way it was built.
Right.
It doesn't look like it's the best quality thing I've ever seen built, and then we're building one up.
What's the useful life of these apartments, single family, the useful life?
I don't have that exact
Because I see now they build up like wood, I guess
Yes.
Right.
construction, so you're not obviously as solid as the bricks that you can just remodel. So at one point of time after eighty years or fifty years they're gonna become too old, they have to be demolished and then we're gonna be talking again about
You might be talking
I know, I
Well, I'm still sitting on this commission, I got bigger problems.
I know.
I'm just telling you.
No.
Point taken.
Because I'll be here.
So how how quickly
I'm gonna be and that's the part that's
Well, we need, I know, so we have a motion on the table.
We have a motion.
We have a motion on the table, we have a second, any further discussion, so you wanted to go on record, Bill, and which I and we we did hear that, so thank you for stating that is
We don't really want it, but
Well, but 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 on the flip side, this this was approved when, I mean, you know, this it it's the 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 north and south
But 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 we have to, we have to rule on whether it conforms with
um so it's it's something to think about as we move forward, right, um
And we're not really approving anything, we're saying it's consistent with portions of the P O C D
No, it's already
With the owners
Right, it was already approved.
The owners is on zoning, right?
The following recommendation, then the approval, the fi- that's that's a zoning issue.
Alright, so we
The owners is on zoning.
George, is the is the presentation of it
We have a we have a motion, we have a second, we have on record saying that the citizens in Simsbury many vocal, you know, don't like as many apartments going up, but we have a motion, any further discussion on the motion? Alright, so all those in favor of the motion as um well, yeah, so we're just on the motion, so all those all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Uh any opposed? Any abstentions? You're gonna abstain? Okay, so the motion carries.
Alright, just um Angel, you might not know this, but I don't, this was in a a a a required referral from zoning.
It was not.
So this was kinda like, you know, hey, give us your input. There are certain instances where the zoning commission must send a referral to the plan in the event that we give it a negative referral that then means that the zoning commission has to have a super majority to approve the application as opposed to the simple
Even a neutral wouldn't
A neutral, does it?
I think.
Yeah, yes, correct.
Is it true?
Yeah, neutral.
I remember
And you know, if it's not positive, it requires a super majority.
We did that once, we did, yeah.
Either positive negative or neutral.
I think on the doorstep.
We have done, yeah.
Alright, again, it was on there, so again, thank you for bringing that for from zoning.
Alright, so you're good?
Yep.
Okay, um
So you have one other item?
Yes, we do, thank you.
On your end, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yes.
So I wanted to get this in your hands. Thank you for um we we need we need to start the Tarryville neighborhood planning process, uh it's funded in this uh in this fiscal year and so I've drafted a a scope, a request for proposal, we would follow a a formal rec- uh town-driven request for proposal process, it would go out to the street, we s- uh solicit those bids, get them in, I'd bring them to you, make a we'd have a discussion, make a decision um and then select a consultant, but first thing it's gotta do is it's gotta get on the street, and so I drafted that scope using the town's um the uh the town's format, but with with kind of my language of a description of the process. I do you have comments, if you don't have comments, I'm gonna
I thought it would
get it to the street, but I I mean, it's it's your pro- it's your it's your process, I do wanted to make sure, I mean, it's very, it's kind of a generalized scope, I I I I really I tend to like the consultant to help us mold that scope and that final scope in terms of what we wanted to do, so I didn't
Yeah. Yeah.
That's why I didn't say it's the town, it's the Tarryville charrette or the Tarryville this, I I I think we should figure out what the best approaches, but by and large, I think we wanna look at existing conditions, we want uh to to analyze the pros and cons of the existing zoning regime that's there
Yeah.
particularly related to the small lots and 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 are there are there opportunities that we're missing? And if there's solutions to that through a uh you know zoning zoning or other economic development recommendations, that's what that's what this we did.
I read through this, I thought it looked good.
Yeah.
And I think it makes sense, in my opinion, to have a consultant come in and and help and
Yeah, no, it's great, man, that's how we prioritized it and
That's just
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know, it's what, I think it's what you want and and I'd like to get that moving so we can, you know, as we go through budget process, we can start proving that
Get that all rolling.
Yeah.
That is good.
How much is budget for?
I wanna say seventy-five, fif- fifty and then seventy-five to do an added um zone or or zoning zone change component.
So overall, a hundred and twenty-five?
Think so.
Okay.
But I'm like, don't
Okay, I'm still wearing that one.
You mean the budget does. I mean, in the middle of budget, I'm not sure worth the number, so I also I'm requesting money for a uh a zoning ordinance rewrite and that's that's money, so I'll come back, I'll get I'll get you that number, I'll just email you that number.
Technology
But that's it's a it's a ballpark, it's the yeah, yeah.
Yes, it is.
So, yeah, so I th- I I liked it, I thought it looked
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it looked good.
It's good.
Alright, so without objection, I'll 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 work with town administration to to to, I'll I'll fix the dates a little bit to make it more realistic, but then it'll go out this month.
Okay, awesome.
Okay.
onto the street.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Alright, so with that said, without objection, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at nine twenty, thank you, everybody.